Three minutes after seven. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Knight is out of town tonight, so I am going to chair the meeting. And the next... So, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for October 10th and October 24th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? I saw one on October 10th on the expiration of the bus contract. It's June 2019 rather than June 2018. That's correct?
No, it would have already expired. It's June 2019.
It's already expired.
It will expire in 2019.
June 2019.
Yeah, it will expire in 2018. It says 2018 in the minutes. But I think it will expire in 2019, and we're thinking about... Okay. So that's the only thing that I saw. Any other additions or corrections? So with that correction, the minutes are accepted as submitted. Public comment. Ms. Luna.
Good evening. This is always nerve-wracking. I live on Jackson Street, and my daughter-
Either that mic is not on, or you need to speak up a little more.
I don't want to break it. But, okay, my name is Raquel Luna, and my kids go to North Wyndham and Wyndham Early Childhood Center. And I'm just here to talk about the proposal to change the policy for transportation. I support the change. You guys haven't gotten into it yet. Mr. Harris went to the SGC meeting at North Wyndham, and I know that was one of the concerns I had as a parent. At the beginning of the year, my daughter was dropped off, and I had an unforeseen emergency, and so I found her outside of my house, panicking. And I called, and I called the bus company, and we came to an agreement that she wouldn't be dropped off again like that. But the policy is only for kindergarteners to have parents or guardians pick them up off the bus. So the new change is proposing that the age change to through second grade. And I just wanted to give my support for that change, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to public comment? If not, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and welcome to our one. Just some information. A reminder, State of the Schools is next Tuesday. All board members are invited. Please let Janet know if you would be attending. We'd like for you to be organized. This is the third year that we celebrate the State of the School, and this is an opportunity to share with members of our community the new initiative that were implemented in the prior school year and where did the school stand. This year will take place at Barrows, and we do have two sessions. The first session in the morning will take place at Barrows, and the second session in the afternoon that will take place at 5:30 at Wyndham Middle School. So we'd love to have you there, and we start very early. We start breakfast at 7:30, and I think by 9 o'clock, we are finished. So it's very, very hard to get. Communication is one of the things that we continue to work in, and different channels of communication, and different way of communicating. There's never too much communication. So we always try to find new ways. Today, in coffee, we had a conversation with Superintendent Ms. Luna. I was there at Natchog. Well- well-attended. We did hear from parents, from community members, that they have seen how communication has improved in the district, and on the web, and face-to-face communication, et cetera, et cetera. So we always try new things. Last board meeting, I said to you that we have the principals either Friday or Sunday making a real call to let the parents know what is taking place in their school, well-received by parents and by the community. And so we also trying something new. We want some of the superintendent would be highlighting three initiatives taking place in the school district right in the schools. And so the first one went out a week ago, I believe. And according to Mrs. Cheney, Mrs. Chatty, we have over 1,700 reach? Reach, Margaret?
Yes, through Facebook.
Through Facebook. So that's another way of keeping people informed what is taking place in the district. The other thing is the standard-based report card. It gave me great pleasure. This is something that was long overdue and has been in the making for a long time, but could never be done just by the central office. This had to be done in collaboration with teachers. And I do have the name of the teacher that spent a year in this process developing standard report card for K through 2. And I want to read the name with a great appreciation and a thank you to Sherry Guiner, Carolina Mendez, Nicole Bay, Amy Finston, Kaylee Ziverman, Helen Martin, Anne Marie Miller, Andrea Gendron, and Catherine Harret. With also the contribution of Marcha Wood, Melissa Gordon, Jessica Sebel, and Tina Gaetani. Worked the entire school year in really developing, and we have some examples for you today. In addition to that, this project could not be done without the leadership and the guidance and support of Dr. Yonberg and Mr. Neil Weathers. Mr. Neil Weathers is not here today. So this was really a year-long project with Dr. Yonberg, Dr. Mr. Weathers, and the teachers working together to make sure that we could have a K through 2 standard report card. That means a lot. It means a lot in the sense of having a standard report card for 3 to 5. It mean a lot looking at promotion of students. It means a lot, et cetera. So let me give you just some example. We have different report card, but maybe I'll share with you bilingual. Let me share with you... This is everybody's grade one bilingual. So I'll share with you. So this is the grade... So this is the Barrows. So we have Barrows a little bit different than the other three schools, the other schools because of they have STEM. But we will... We can provide you a copy of each one of the grades, K through 2. We do have... I'm not going to give you all of them tonight, but I want to say this is tremendous work. This is... This is good work. This is what parents want to know about where their kids are, what they're doing, and how they're doing. This is really talking about what the child is learning and where the child is. Good information for teacher, good information for parents. This is what parents want to know. So I know that Dr. Murphy, when I came here a couple of years ago, and over the years, have always said the need of a standard-based report card. And it was not an easy task to start. It's not something that can be done overnight. But very proud now that we have the K through 2, and then we'll be working now this year on developing 3 to 5. So you can take it home with you, and we can send you some others if you have any question. And again, if you see any of the teachers that I just mentioned, Sherry Guiner, Carolina Mendez, Nicole Bay, Amy Finston, Kaylee Ziverman, Helen Martin, Anne Marie Miller, Andrea Gendron, Catherine Harret, Dr. Yonberg, and Mr. Neil Weathers, please give them a big thank you. Let's give them a thank you right. And I do want to say that not only the work... This is a very good report card. It's an outstanding report card. I mean, I... Kudos to this report card. It's a very good report card. Question, Mr.?
What is the tier? Tears?
Tier. Tier one, tier two.
Tier one, tier two, and tier three.
Okay. Then we have the policies, and I think we have two policies that are coming for first reading tonight. The policy, the first, the one on transportation. Couple of months ago, we started discussing this policy of transportation. And I know Mrs. Elder, where we speak about it. But we felt that having kindergarteners were the only ones that were picked up at the bus stop. I start really being concerned about first graders and second graders not being picked up by an adult. And so we decided that this will create that we have to have conversation with the bus company. It will create that we have to inform parents. We have to communicate to parents for this new change. But we believe that this is the right thing for our students, so we're bringing it to you tonight.
Okay, so where did this come from? Did this come from parents, or does this come from staff?
This came from staff. And I tell you how it came from staff. I mean, in this time that we really need to make sure that we have some safety standards and security for our students. I mean, you have first graders that are this small, very tiny.
I actually had an opportunity earlier this fall on a couple of occasions to meet a bus for a friend who has a first grader. And the bus had children from... It was a bus from Natchog, had children from K to 5 on it. So they pile off altogether. There were far fewer parents there than there were small children. And the children are like together and watching out for one another, which... So I have a couple of questions. One of... One concern that I have about it is that a lot of parents are essentially... One parent's at work, sometimes both of them are at work when the children get off the school bus. And if they have another child at home, then the parent's kind of torn between meeting the school bus or looking after another small child at home. So that can create an awkward situation. The other thing that came to mind is that we ask children as young as kindergarten to walk a half a mile to school. If a child can walk by themselves back and forth a half a mile, why can't they get off a bus and walk a half a mile?
Good statement. I do want to say I do not know many kids in first grade or kindergarten walking a half a mile that the parents do not bring them to school. I will say to you that the majority of the parents bring them to school. But we bring it to the board for first reading and for discussion. That's the purpose of the board. That's your role as a board, to make policies. We're bringing this to you because we do feel based on concern from parents and concern from the staff that kids that are in first grade should not be left at the bus by themselves. Maybe they should have an older brother, older sister, someone.
Yeah, that's the other thing when it says an authorized person. In some cases, an authorized person is a third grader? Mr. DeSagne?
This goes back quite a number of years. From the last time, I remember being... Having this discussion. The board was trying to cut costs on transportation and started making... Spreading bus stops out. And there are, like Murphy's saying, there are a lot of kids younger that are getting off in certain areas and having to walk quite a distance to their houses, which in today's day and age is pretty dangerous, I think. So in other towns, surrounding towns, the age is up a lot higher. The bus companies do wait, and they will bring kids back. They won't let kids off. In Wyndham, you know, they'll let the kids off no matter what. So our kids are just as valuable as a kid in, you know, another town. So that's something that would probably have to be addressed also in the policy. Because like he says, you can't let somebody off a half mile from their house, say, walk home, and then somebody who gets dropped at their door, don't let them off because mom or dad or somebody's not home. So that whole thing has to be revamped. And I don't think a single policy is gonna affect that. We're gonna have to revamp that whole thing and the bus routes as well.
Well, so lots of discussion for transportation. You do write, Mr.... You're right, Mr. DeSagne. So I checked with Mansfield and some others surrounding school district, and their first graders are not dropped off by themselves. So they're either an older child, middle school, fifth grader, but they have to be somebody for the kid to walk home. So we... I checked with Mansfield on the same situation, K through 2. So that's why we put it at K through 2. But it's up for the board for discussion. We firmly believe, myself on the cabinet, you know, I have a little girl that's in first grade, I don't know, in second grade this year. And I think as a mother, I'd be... I mean, I will be devastated if she drops off by herself, and you know, you never know what can happen at a bus stop. So what we're saying is that we don't say the parents have to be there, but if they have an older sibling, a bigger, you know, older sibling, or somebody, a neighbor, something that the child can... So it's up for the board for discussion. You know, we don't make the policy. We bring it to you, and that's your decision.
I'm wondering, though, if we ought not to try and get more information from parents about... And Mr. DeSagne is a parent with children in the school, so that's one. You have children in the schools.
Right. They're older, but I did have a question about the Mansfield because since they don't have sidewalks, I believe they're all pretty much dropped right at their house. And it may be the case that kindergarten first graders have to have an adult there, but it's door-to-door. So I think they're not really... It's not a good comparison unless... When I first started, and my daughter was in school, I think there was an age like K through 1 or 2 that they were dropped off at their homes. But, you know, that was many contrast ago.
I mean, you look back. When I went to school in... I went to Norwich. I used to walk to kindergarten, you know, to Bishop School. And you walk through the city, and it was different. Right now, I have a seventh grader at Barrows. She doesn't get off the bus by herself without, you know, some... A sitter at the house or somebody. That's up to every... Each individual parent. But I think as a district, personally, I think under second grade is without somebody is kind of...
All I'm saying is if you visit the bus stops, that you'll find that there are children as young as kindergarten getting off the bus without... Now, there may be an older sibling on the bus, because I don't know the kids. But the other thing is, is that in these situations, the children are getting off the bus as a gang. It's not a single child that's walking alone on the street somewhere.
Who polices this? Because if 12 kids get off the bus all at the same time and scatter, how is the bus driver going to, one, keep an eye on their safety? And we all know what's been in the news lately about cars not stopping for buses and stuff like that. That would be their first priority. But make sure that every child's accounted for unless they let them off one by one and have somebody there saying, "That one's mine, that one's mine," and that doesn't always happen. So then some parent calls. I call, and I have a first grader and say, "Andrew got off the bus today, and the bus driver didn't check to make sure I was there, and I was running late. I got stuck at work. I got stuck behind a car or something. My car broke down, and they still let my child off." How do... Who do we hold responsible? Is that the district's responsibility because it's our policy? Or is it the bus company's responsibility? And are they willing to take that on as that conversation happened?
So we're not naive about this. So we know that this is not going to be a smooth transition, right? And so we know there would be a lot of bumps in the road, and we have to... If this is approved by the board, we know that we... Central office will have to start planning how this is going to be rolled out. Because we know this is not going to be easy. But what I would like to say to you is this is not something that is unique only to Wyndham Public School. Lots of school districts across the state of Connecticut and other places do this. So where I will start first is looking at school district that do have this type of policy, that first and second graders have somebody, an adult or somebody older. How does it work for them? And to get a response to that. So I will just, without recreating the wheel, those schools district, because like I said, there's lots of school districts that do have this policy that first and second graders and kindergarteners have someone to walk home with. So I guess I will start there and then come back to you and give you that response. But again, we know this is not going to be easy because we need to educate the parents. And we know that maybe the bus company may have buses that have to come back to school because some kids were not there. And we know that they use these same buses to go to another school to pick up kids at 3:45.
Right.
Okay, so we know this is not easy. But we feel, and particularly Superintendent, very strongly, that for the safety of our kids, I mean, they need to be somebody. Either a fifth grader to walk home with, a fourth grader. I don't know, a seventh grader, a high school, a parent, a grandmother, someone. You know, we have not had any incident that's a child... Well, any child that had disappeared for a couple hours. We found him later, always, right? But I don't know, with what's taking place across the country today with our students, I think any type of measure that we could put in place to make them safer works it.
And I'd like... And I don't disagree with the policy. I'm concerned about how it's going to be implemented because if somebody calls our bus person and says, our transportation person, and says, you know, "I wasn't there," whose responsibility is it? Is it the bus companies? Is it ours? And I'd like you to look at not only cities like Bridgeport, Hartford, stuff like that, but more rural areas like Mansfield because we have both here.
Lebanon, yeah.
Yeah, Lebanon. Out in the Wyndhams, it's more rural. There's no sidewalks and stuff like that. Where in the city, there's more sidewalks, there's more people around, for better or for worse.
I can well understand in Wyndham, if you pull up in front of a house to drop a child off, and there's nobody there.
Yeah, you can understand that.
You don't want to just drop the child off in front of a house with nobody there. But in the city, it's different.
So one idea we can do is ask parents. You know, we could put a survey to parents and see how they feel about this. So we could do that and check. So, yeah, so today's the first reading, and that for your approval. I love that there's good discussion about this.
I have to say, when my daughter was in kindergarten, she got picked up right in front of the house. And then somewhere between first and second grade, she had to get picked up down the street and dropped off. And I remember that the bus driver would wait for me to pick her up. She wouldn't let her off the bus. I don't know, this was like 12 years ago? 14, 10 years ago, something like that. And I know, security has gotten worse in the world, so we need to be even more cautious. So I think, and what I've seen in my work in picking up other people's kids, that the bus driver would keep the smaller kids back. She would have a list of the smaller, the younger kids, and she would keep them back. And then she would let them off when someone is there to pick them up. If she knew me, she didn't ask me for ID. But if, like, Ms. Lambert came to pick up Mia Ray, they would not let her go with Ms. Lambert unless she showed her ID, unless they knew her. So it's gonna have to be the bus company's responsibility because, like she said, if I'm a kindergartner, if I'm a parent of a kindergartner and I'm running late, I can't call the bus driver. I can call the bus company, but by the time they get to her, she's gonna be on her way back to the bus company with my child. You know, so if I send someone else down there, how do they get that information, you know?
Okay, so here's...
So there's two things.
Here's a situation that I know of in town. Preschool bus, it goes up Walnut Street, and the bus from... With the kids, K to 12, is coming down Valley Street. Okay, so if you've got a preschooler and a K to 12, you've got two blocks down that way on Valley Street and a block and a half that way on Walnut. And even though the bus schedule says that the buses are about 10 minutes apart, it's a practical matter, they tend to arrive at almost the same time every day. So how do you get, pick up two kids four blocks apart at the same time?
Perfect answer to that.
Well, if you give the...
We go back to the old... We go back to the old way of busing before we tried cutting the bus budget down to almost nothing. Put the right amount of buses on to drop the kids off in the right spot so they're not walking a half mile and they're not all over the place. Get them home safely, and, you know, that's a dollar well spent. That's where you go with that. Because we, back eight years ago, we started cutting all, you know, little things all over the place. And that was one cut, I think, that we made that was one of the worst things that we ever did, was start spreading these kids out all over the place. The other thing, I think, with the parents at the bus stop, it might promote a little more parental interaction with the kids, which is something that this district greatly needs. So somebody might be there.
I don't think we have saved a lot of money on...
No, we haven't. I think it was a horrible mistake, and probably if we went back to the tape, you'd hear me saying that it was not going to save us money.
It would cost us... It would cost us probably another six, high six to close to seven figures to do what we were doing eight years ago. And we don't have it. We don't even get an increase in a year from our taxpayers that add up to the amount... You're talking about spending the entire increase on buses. We can't afford it. Can't... I mean, that's not a solution. The question is, how do we... I mean, I don't disagree with you about making sure that the children are safe, and that the safety of your children is the first priority. The question is, how do we implement this in a rational way? And I'm not so sure... I mean, just watching kids, it's one thing when children are getting off a bus one at a time, as they do in the Wyndhams, and as they do in Mansfield. But it's another thing when children get off 22 or 23 at a time, or 40 at a time, and go up the street together. I don't think children are as much at risk when they're in a group as they are when they're individuals. And I really would like to get more input from parents who are dealing with the situation and the difficulties that parents see, the worries that they have, and how complicated this would be for a parent who is, you know, either a single parent or their spouse is working when the kids get off from school. And we have... I know at least one child that gets off the bus, and both of her parents are working when that child gets off the bus. That's a second grader, but she goes home... She's a Latke kid. Okay, we have those in town.
I mean, that's the same, you know, and that's the same everywhere. I mean, you know...
No, that's not new. That's been going on for 25 or 30 years.
Not comfortable with that.
You know, I work during the day, my wife works during the day, and my second... First grader gets off the bus, my seventh grader gets off the bus, but there's somebody there. You make sure there's somebody there.
I don't let my little second grader get off the bus with somebody's picking her up, if they have to pick her up. And the bus is right over there, the house is there. I mean, somebody have to pick her up.
All I can say is go stand at a bus stop and see how often that happens. I mean, I don't disagree with you, but the reality is is that that doesn't work for every parent in this town.
You know, and it'll work if you put... If you implement it because Columbia, Lebanon, they all implement it.
Yeah.
And it happens. And we don't have the... They don't have the issues.
So we could come back to you with all your questions. I mean, we'll try to answer your question as much as possible. So, you know, we could pose this question to the parents. If you'd like us to get a survey to the parents to see. We can check with the other school district. As you said, Columbia has it, and so does Lebanon has it also.
Oh, wait a minute. Columbia doesn't have sidewalks, Lebanon doesn't have sidewalks, Mansfield doesn't have sidewalks. Go to someplace that has sidewalks. Try New Britain.
Wyndham doesn't have sidewalks.
Wyndham don't have sidewalks either.
Wyndham doesn't, but Willimantic does.
That's why I said, look at both, both a city and a more rural setting. So that way you get...
No, I absolutely agree with what you're saying.
If we had to have two different policies for two different parts of town, places without sidewalks have this, places with sidewalks don't, or do, that's what we have to do. But I don't disagree these children need to be protected, but I wonder at what point parenting has to take over and at what point we have to hold parents responsible for their actions. And I think if a child is returned to school multiple times, and maybe this needs to be part of the policy, we make a DCF referral. A first grader legally shouldn't be home alone, I'm pretty sure, without some kind of supervision. So if there's nobody to get them off the bus, do we have to assume there's no supervision? Return them to school, and after the fifth time or whatever the policy committee or the state determines is a reasonable number of times, do we make a referral then to DCF because...
So currently, the principals do that. After a certain amount of time, they do call DCF currently.
But without this policy, we don't know how many times these children are truly going home to empty houses or unsupervised time.
I agree with you. And the other thing I strongly disagree with, Murphy is treating a kid that lives... Just because he lives in an area with sidewalks in first grade, and my child's in first grade in the Wyndhams with no sidewalks, is... It's a child that lives, just because he or she doesn't have a sidewalk, needs a parent, and the one with a sidewalk, that's...
If there's no sidewalk, you're getting door-to-door... If there's no sidewalk, you're getting door-to-door drop off. You're dropping off children one or one or one or two at a time. Okay? And there needs to be someone there when those children are dropped off.
Okay.
But when you're in the city where there is a sidewalk, you're dropping kids off 20 and 30 at a time, and that's a different situation.
You need some parents there, or they don't get off the bus. You need some parents there, or they don't get off the bus, because you know what?
You know what?
They're just, they're just as at risk, as, they're actually more at risk than, than a kid being dropped off in front of their home, out in the Wyndham's.
Right, but the policing of it is different.
Yeah, I see.
You wave from your front door when your kid gets dropped off, if you're home, say, yep, somebody's here. You don't necessarily have to go out and stand at the end of the driveway, or something like that. You might, if it's raining, or an umbrella, or if your child needs help off the bus, or something like that. But a second grader, you can wave, and they can get off the bus when it's snowy, 'cause you don't wanna go out in the cold, and that's understandable. But in the city, if you're dropping off at the corner of Mansfield Ave by the hospital, and my child has to walk up to my house, I have to get out and come down, and that's harder to police if they're getting dropped off in large groups. And that's why that was my first, my initial question, was like, who's in charge of policing this? Are the parents gonna police it, is the bus driver gonna police it? They have enough things to worry about with the safety of the kids, crossing the street and darting out into traffic and stuff like that. I just want those things clearly laid out, and I want the bus company to be aware of it, because if we say the bus driver's now in charge, and nobody has this conversation with the bus company, when we get that phone call, that Andrew got dropped off, and nobody was there to get him, and they still left him, and he sat on my front doorstep for an hour in the cold, whose responsibility is it then? The school districts or the bus companies? Those lines need to be really clear before we go through with this policy, I think.
So if you, if I may just summarize what you guys are saying. We know we have a lot of questions to answers, and so we could go back and sit with the team, and do some research, and come back to you. You know, tonight is not for you to approve this policy, it's just for discussion. So we appreciate the, the purposefully and meaningful discussion taking place. And so we'll go back and look at how it's implemented some other place, look at both places, urban and rural. Uh, definitely, how many times a kid dropped off, and the parents is not there, what do we do? If it's five times, et cetera, et cetera, and then come back to you guys with some, some more information.
So I have a question. So now, it sounds like if you live in the Wyndham's and you don't have, you don't have sidewalks, that your kid gets dropped off in front of the door, no matter what age they are?
Pretty much.
Pretty much, yeah.
Well, how do we afford that? How do we afford that, to drop every kid off in the Wyndham's?
Because we have to, because that's the law. Most of these children are living on, on roads that are, a lot of them are living on state highways. I mean, you can't ask a child to walk down a state highway.
So we're, maybe we need to look at that policy and see.
Well, we can't change that, that the law is, that if they live on that kind of a road, that they have to be-
To see what it says and how we incorporate the city.
They can't walk. That's even true near, near, uh, the Barrows School. There're no, there're no sidewalks along Tucky Road.
Oh, and I wouldn't in the world let one of my children walk along Tucky Road, even a-
That's a dangerous, that's a very dangerous road.
No, I mean-
Fly down that road.
Not even an older kid.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can come back to you, uh, because we don't have the answer tonight, so we can bring those back to you in another. So we'll definitely bring this to the policy committee, and then bring these back to you. Okay.
But just a point, um, when we had the committee meeting dates, in January, the Planning and Design Committee is going to start looking at our, um, reviewing the facility's master plan, and we're going to be meeting twice a month, the first and third Thursday of the month. Can you make the agenda, the, the schedule reflect that? Yeah, for the second reading, we're gonna have two meetings a month.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, under policy.
The, 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 the meeting dates, I just saw it, yeah.
Right, the meeting dates, so I don't, you went on, so that's fine. I mean, we can obviously all read the meeting dates, we didn't need it explained, but, um, school planning and design is gonna meet first and third Thursdays of each month at five o'clock.
I just overlooked it.
Until we get the facilities master plan completed, and then we'll just drop back down to one unless we meet otherwise. Thank you.
Okay. So we also have the first reading on the revisions to the student handbook, which I thought, that's kind of a-
Well, we skipped a transportation one, so do we not wanna read it at all? What, the changes we made to the person in the second grade?
The transportation one is the one we were just talking about.
Right.
I know.
It should really, it should come under committee reports, actually, so.
Yes, that's why I'm confused about that, all right.
No, you can discuss, others tell us why we brought it up, so you can discuss it.
No, I don't think we need to discuss it anymore, but we're just not gonna have the first reading then.
Well, this is the first reading, it's in the, it's in the packet. We assume we've read it.
We can just decide not to take action at the next meeting until we have all the information we need, and then if revisions need to be made, we'll have another first reading.
This could still be the first reading, and then we'll, we, we could get answers to questions. We don't necessarily have to vote on it immediately at the next meeting, particularly if there's more information that, that we want.
Okay, so that's why I was asking, because we're already jumping to the handbook.
I don't think there's any reason not to count it as a first reading. Okay. All right, if you wanna talk about the other one at the, okay, so- That gets us to, that gets us to discussion items, right?
Yeah.
Before we leap into that, uh, I've been asked to, to poll the board members on, uh, and actually, I would like to promote the Sweeney Feast next Tuesday. It's a wonderful event. Uh, if you haven't gone, if you, if you're new, you haven't had an opportunity to go, you should seize it, uh, and if you-
It's not open to the public.
No.
No, it's not open to board members, he's talking.
But I'm asking for-
People at home can't go.
I'm asking board members, because, um, the principal needs to know by tomorrow. I'm planning to go.
I RSVP'd today, I called the school already.
Yes.
I'm, I regret I can't make it.
Okay. Anyone else planning to go?
No, can't make it.
Unfortunately, if you're working, it kinda gets in the way. It's at noon on Tuesday, next week. It's a great event. You read about it in the paper. Okay.
You know why, you may have convinced me.
Mrs. Lambert and I will represent the board next Tuesday.
I'll be there.
Oh, you're going?
Yeah, I'm going.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Did you call?
Yes, of course I did.
Good.
Good.
I know what RSVP means.
And you have to do it by when?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. Thank you. Yep.
Okay, so, you wanna tell us about?
Yeah, so still waiting for information from the State Department of Education. A meeting with the commissioner on December third. Uh, uh, the money has been approved, as we said before, by the State Board of Education, but it is in the State Advisory Council Committee. I don't know what is the delay there. I have made some phone calls, but I was hoping to get a response. They told me that on the third of December, when I meet with the State Commissioner of Education, I will get a response, uh, from the release of funding from the State Advisory Council. So the funds are approved within the State Advisory Council.
Now that the election's over, and people know who's gonna be in charge of doing things, maybe they'll move a little more, ahead more, a little more firmly than before. I don't know.
So, um, I'm not gonna read this, it's there, you have requested some information about steps. Um, a good program for kids, still a very challenging for us and for the school district. Uh, we have twenty-eight students in the program, with six of them being seniors that wanna be graduating, uh, this year. We, the program is, is, is challenging, but it's, it's moving as well as it can. Um, lots of support. Uh, we have a, uh, finishing, it started a, a week ago, uh, in the program, and we're looking at offering these students some new opportunities in the afternoon, some type of career classes, such as culinary arts classes, manufacturing classes. So we, we're having conversation with Wyndham Tech right now, and also with our own teachers here, because we do have a culinary arts class, and we do have the manufacturing lab. So maybe in, after the holidays in December, starting in January, we may look at, uh, having some more hands-on, uh, for these, for these students. Uh, but we are moving with the academics. They're career counseling, they're using ingenuity, they're getting their courses. A special ed teacher will be starting pretty soon. Uh, Mrs. Youngberg had been assigned to supervise that program, and we also have a teacher parents conference that will be taking place, actually, tomorrow and Friday, um, at the scope, so I don't know if there's any other question regarding the program. And the information that you requested, update on the budget, is in your pocket. I don't know if you have any question. Mr., uh, Mr. Johnson had a family emergency this afternoon, so he could not attend, uh, the board meeting, but the information that he presented for the, is there in the budget.
This was the end of last year?
Yes, this is the end of last year, seventeen eighteen.
Do you recall, we added five hundred thousand dollars to the transportation budget, because we kept falling short every year? And it, at the rate, we were seven hundred seventy-eight thousand, almost seven hundred seventy-nine thousand short last year. So it's gonna be a struggle to keep under the budget that we've got as it is, with whatever flaws it might have in terms of, but I, it, I, I, I don't think that we can go back to door-to-door in the city. Just, I don't think there's any way that that makes, that that's financially possible. So we are gonna have to figure out something that works, however.
I do wanna say the transportation increase is due to special ed transportation, not to regular.
Well, still, it's all part of the budget, though.
Yeah, still part of the budget.
If you started doing something that's more expensive, it's gonna drive it up, that's... Okay, so are we ready for committee reports? I could do finance and audit really quickly, we haven't met since the last meeting a couple weeks ago. And, but the budget process, I assume, is on calendar.
Yes, we are working.
That we approved at our last meeting. So, planning and design.
That would be me. We met last week, it was an interesting meeting, to say the least. Um, talked about lots of different updates, about what's going on at the building, leaking roofs. Uh, Mr. Harris is gonna get us a timeline of when the roofs are, um, aged out. Um, we have at least three of our buildings, Natchog, the high school, the middle school, um, have been, had their roofs replaced. Barrows is still within its twenty years. Wyndham Center, North Wyndham, and Sweeney are the ones he's gonna check on the dates for, so we can go forward to the finance department and talk, the finance, Board of Finance here in town, there we go, and, um, and discuss with them, um, like a timeline for, that way they can be prepared with their bonding issues and stuff like that, on when these roofs are gonna need to be replaced. I believe the Wyndham Center roof is about thirty-two years old, which puts it well out of its usable life, so that'll be eligible for reimbursement, um, hopefully at the full seventy-nine point six-three percent. Other things going on, um, oil tanks need to be removed, discussion about switching over to propane in the Wyndham's, because they don't have natural gas lines. Natchog and Sweeney are both on the gas lines now, so conversions and stuff like that. Um, discussed the, um, high school renovation committee briefly. Um, Ms. Chady is gonna get me information about the thought exchange and the questions from the forum before Monday. Okay. Um, before next Monday, which is our next school planning and, I mean, our new, our next high school renovation committee. Um, Bob Roach had said he was supposed to meet today with staff.
He's meeting on the nineteenth.
He sent you an email, he's gonna meet with them on the nineteenth, to begin discussing-
He had two dates, fourteen and the nineteenth, the high school decided the nineteenth.
Okay. So the nineteenth, um, our architect, Bob Roach, will be here discussing, um, the needs with the people that actually work in the building, um, and he had some questions about special ed and some other specialty programs. Um, that was about it, I think, yes. We, the, the high school renovation committee really needs the ed specs, and that's really what's holding up the, the design portion of it. There seems to be more courses being planned to be offered than we may have classrooms available for, so that's gonna be a big concern.
Well, it's not necessarily, well, you know, one of the things at high school, I always say, they want kids to have the opportunity to have all these experiences and these courses. But I think once they meet, well, then we'll see that one classroom could be used for maybe more than one course, and not necessarily you wanna have a classroom for every single course that you're offering, so.
No, 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 we have twenty-five available courses, I think Mr. Roach said, and that didn't-
Classrooms.
For twenty, yeah, twenty-five available classrooms, and he hadn't figured in special ed, which are dedicated classrooms just to that program, or the Camino Altos program. So that left us twenty available classrooms, and there was a hundred and twelve possible programming.
And some of those classrooms are special purpose, like, like science labs-
Labs and stuff like that, so.
They're kinda limited in what you can teach them.
But I think we have more than twenty classrooms right now that we're using, currently, at this time.
Well, once you're, once you've put, uh, the, the early childhood program into this building, along with the, uh, Board of Education, it's gonna be, the building is not gonna be quite as, quite as expansive as it, as it seems now.
And you think this class, this building is oversized for six hundred students, I get that, but we've taken off a chunk for Board of Ed, we've taken off a chunk for early childhood, and you have spaces that we're not gonna change, that are huge spaces, like cafeteria, the auditorium, the gymnasium, the pool, those take good chunks of space from-
Gymnasiums.
Two gymnasiums, I know. But those take good chunks of space off of what we can use for programming, and with our limited budget, we're, you know, gonna try and work within what we have now, instead of tearing down walls, and we are definitely not adding on. Mary was there when we interviewed architects, and some of them were like, well, if you just add on over here, and, no, 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 we're not adding on, we're oversized, and the state won't reimburse us for that. So those are all challenges that we're seeing, but right now, for the building committee, um, firming up the ed specs and making sure we're all moving in the right direction, 'cause once we start really doing some construction, it's gonna be hard to make those changes, and very expensive.
Well, he had sent me, this is like the third time that we give him the ed specs, and so we sent it back to the high school, the high school meet, gave us some response. So I decided that the best thing is for him to go directly to the high school, and speak directly to the staff, because this is like the third time that, uh, you know, he sent me an email, we took it to the high school, but we are the middleman, you know, I think the best thing is for him to speak directly to that.
Absolutely.
So he's gonna be meeting with them in groups on the nineteenth, the teachers and the principal is aware, and so he can ask those questions directly to them. My only concern is, you know, the, the, one of the, the mission of the high school is to offer more opportunities to kids, and different opportunities, so, um, looking at the number of classes, they're gonna be less than what we currently have to, to use, that it use, that concern me a little bit, if we want to offer all of these career pathways to kids.
We might need to focus, narrow our focus just a little bit, in some of these plans.
Oh, yeah, we can't have five career pathways.
Right, yeah, no.
The school already, I already told them that, that's impossible. The only, three career pathways is where we need to go, in parts, we can't have six. But that would be something to consider if, you know, we want to offer new experiences to kids. Now, we're talking about, well, the space will, will be limited.
Yeah, the, the problem's gonna have to be solved within the physical capability of the building. That's, that, that seems to be the struggle at this point, is that, uh, understandably, the, the staff have, has a wish list. There's a lot of things they wish to be able to do. Uh, that's quite understandable, but the building also has a physical limitation, and so what has to happen is for the, for the, the architect, who knows about the physical space limitations of the building, to get together with the people with the wish list and, and try and resolve it.
Right.
It's a, operations researcher calls it, calls it the knapsack problem, right? How much stuff can you put in the box?
Exactly, and some of those spaces are just things that we can't mess with, because they're the auditorium or the cafeteria. You can't break the cafeteria up into classrooms and use it differently than what it's intended for, so, those are our challenges right now. I think that's it, is there anything that you think I missed?
Uh, well, yeah, the other thing is, that, that came up at the meeting, is the, uh, as you said, the plan in the spring to begin working on the, uh, update to the master facilities plan, because the plan is originally passed by the Board of Education, had the high school renovation at the end.
Right.
We put it at the beginning, so we obviously have to take another look at it. We have two elementary school buildings that haven't been renovated in more than fifty years, uh, another one that hasn't been renovated in more than thirty years. Uh, and so we, we, we can't keep waiting on, on those, and so the next thing that has to happen is for the administration to come up with a, a needs assessment, you know, what are we going to be doing with K to eight, essentially?
Right.
Over the next ten or twenty years, and then we have to look at what that means in terms of our facility requirements over that time period.
This board has to make some kind of a decision on if we wanna move to K to eight schools, what our intent is for the Companeros program, as in housing and, and growth and stuff like that, and those decisions are gonna be, need to be made, probably in not too much short of order.
We should make them in the spring.
Well, we should make them in January or February, because that's gonna drive the facilities master plan, so.
Yes. And we need to take care of those elementary school buildings, before the roofs start to-
Leak and stuff, exactly.
So I did put in a revision of the strategic plan, looking at, uh, research for K through eight Companeros, and really conducting a need assessment for the K through eight Companeros. So tomorrow, we'll add K through eight as a, as a whole.
Yeah, I think, I think we all want, wanna have the K to eight dual-language school. The question is-
I did put that already.
The question is, how, how, and where are we gonna implement that?
And do we wanna do K through eight for all of our schools, and where is the best place to house those populations? That would eliminate the need for a middle school as we have it now, or put two middle schools in there, I mean, two K through eight schools in there with two different purposes, or two general ed middle schools in there or something, but that's something we really need to look at, and we need to have the board make that decision before the committee and the facilities master plan can go on with making those determinations, 'cause making schools K through eight, schools have transportation challenges and space challenges, different, people need different amounts of space and stuff like that, that's something we have to be able to look at, so.
So we'll have to conduct a feasibility study, to bring that to you, to bring those results.
Mm-hmm.
So that will take some time, because we, we're not the experts to conduct a feasibility study. We can set the expectation, the parameters, but we'd have to get someone to come and conduct that feasibility study for us. So we, I could start working on that, uh, after the data of the school, uh, looking at how to get that out there to conduct the feasibility study. That would be the first step. I did put today, the compañeros, I would put this on the strategic plan tomorrow, the feasibility study.
Okay, so...
Mike has a question.
I have a question. You're talking about the roofs and everything on the schools. Back four years ago, five years ago, this was all supposed to be put on a five and a 10-year plan and supposed to be implemented in sections. Why hasn't it been done? Or has it been done? Has it just been dropped, moved? What's going on with that?
The first phase of it was the high school renovation.
Before we maintained our buildings?
I'm sorry?
It's not maintaining them, it's renovating them.
Right, this is a renovation plan.
But if we're losing roofs, and we're, I mean, that's, that kind of goes along with that five to 10-year maintenance plan on buildings that we were talking about. So we didn't run into a problem. You know, we didn't let a school go years and years and then say, oh, wow, everything's, everything's bad.
I'm not sure what you're talking about. We did your 10-year facilities master plan.
Right.
And that wasn't a maintenance plan. That was a renovation, building purposes, that kind of stuff. Talked about doubling the size of Sweeney. We talked about possibly closing one of the schools if we needed to. We talked about making a building compañeros only, those kind of things. And the high school was at the back end of the renovation.
Right.
The middle school was, was right near it. So, because the middle school is now 24 years old, so, believe it or not. So, you know, those kind of things. It wasn't about upkeep and stuff like that. And ideally, we had gotten everything we wanted to get done within 10 years. But we're now in year seven, and we've only gotten the first phase of it done, which was the high school renovation. It's the biggest phase, it's the most expensive phase. The others are smaller. Couple of them are just small projects, and a couple of them are renovated as news. But none of it was an overarching maintenance.
Right. I mean, because we ran into this problem years ago where, where it was, you know, the school buildings, all of a sudden, the facilities department came to us and said, oh, this is bad, that's bad, that's bad. And the question of the board back then was, who's been maintaining this stuff? Why is it coming to this? And at that point, the board said, and put out policy that these things would be maintained. And I'm just, and the way I'm hearing it now is we're just letting stuff go, or...
We're not letting stuff go. But the thing that happened at the time that you were on the board before was, the Natchog roof was not really a surprise. The board, before Tracy and I were elected even, which is over nine years ago, was making an effort to do something about the Natchog roof.
Right.
And it, it wasn't getting past the process, the town council, Board of Finance, State Board of Education. It's, it's not easy to fix a roof until the roof actually started to collapse.
Right.
At which point it became an emergency. Now, what we've got is some minor leaking and some things that are reminding us that before we get into that situation again, we need to get some commitments from the town, the Board of Finance, to plan their capital budgeting problem to say, okay, we are going to need to replace the roof on the, right now, the Wyndham Middle School, or the Wyndham Center School roof, as far as I know, is not leaking.
No.
But it is 30, 30-some years old. So, so one cannot expect that it's going to go much longer without leaking. And rather than wait until we're in the situation that we're in with the Natchog school, let's do something.
And, and these are town-owned buildings.
Yes.
So this is all, this shouldn't be going on the Board of Ed budget.
No, they're under the direction of the Board of Ed. The town can't do anything in a building without our, right.
But it should be, it's paid for through the town budget.
It's actually paid through, mostly through the State Board of Education because it's a school building.
We get to reimburse, we get the 80%.
The town actually does the work.
79.64.
Right.
But the state pays almost 80% of it.
You have 79, 79.64.
But you have to agree to do it, and you have to plan to do it. And it would be much better all the way around if we planned to do it before it became a crisis. Because you know what happened when it became a crisis. We ended up squashing kids into the, into the middle school building. And we have at least one board member who's unhappy about that because her children suffered through it. It was not a pleasant experience.
But wouldn't this also impact your decision, looking at K through eight? I mean, because if you look at K through eight, then you're not going to be using all those buildings, right? If you go through a K through eight, those...
Well...
Right.
There are, there are design issues and all that. And if we, if we do a renovate as new, it takes care of the roof along with the rest of the building.
Yeah, but if, once you renovate the roof, then you have to keep it for a certain amount of years.
It has to be used for an educational purpose. It doesn't, it's interesting what that means.
Okay. So, seven years ago, we started this process, and we had a facilities master plan, and it had four phases, I believe. And we're just starting phase number one. So I don't know what makes anyone think that in the next 10 years, we will have this completed. It's a goal, but we have to realize the town that we live in and the budgets that we have to live within. So if we don't get, if we get a new roof on Wyndham Center, because I believe it's the oldest one, but I'm not absolutely positive.
It is the oldest one.
Mr. Harris is going to find out on that for me. But I believe it's the oldest one. If we get a new roof on it, there's nothing saying that it's not being used for swing space or something within the next 10 years. It doesn't have to be purposed to a specific school or something. But as we're doing construction on one school, we may have to move some students into there or move some of those students out to another school and as we've renovated another school and change these populations around a little bit. It will be, you know, a challenge for a few years while we're going through this process. But in the end, we have up-to-date, safe, and appropriate-for-Americans-with-disabilities act compliant, as well as all the other things that weren't necessary 50 years ago. Technology, fire safety, ADA, transportation issues. Natchog is a nightmare for trying to drive around when the bus is let out. Security. Every school should have a vestibule. We have some vestibules in all of our schools, but are they as effective as they could be if we had a professional come in and take a look at them? No. So I don't feel unsafe in any of our buildings. I have dropped off stickers for referendums and stuff like that. They ask me who I am, they ask me why I'm there. I feel very secure with our schools. But could we make it better? And do our students deserve that? Just like they deserve a safe way to get home, absolutely. So I really think, I am lucky that Tyler Griffin, who is on the Board of Finance, comes to all of my school planning and design committee meetings and gives me feedback. And I told him that we would come to him with, you know, a kind of plan for the next few years for the roofs. And I don't know that it's humorous, but there it is, so.
And the argument about, are you really going to use the building for 10 years, was a heated argument before the Natchog roof was...
The Natchog roof was replaced over 10 years ago.
And look how that's playing out.
Over 10 years ago, yeah.
Well, no, and it's not over 10 years ago. But we will use that building for 10 years and then some. Now, you and I have only been on the board for nine years. They didn't do that roof until after we got elected.
Seven, seven.
Yeah. It's been long enough that it's clear that the building...
We're not getting the students out of there within the next three years, so we're good.
They're not going to get out of there within 10 years. So, so I don't think, at the rate things move, I don't think that you have to worry about whether a building will be used for 10 years. Okay, so, policy committee.
Okay, so, can you hear me? So we met the week before last, and we discussed four policies, which two we brought for first reading, the other two still need some work. Of course, the first one that we've spent much time on is our transportation, which we tweaked a little bit, but obviously, after this long discussion, we need to go back to the table. But as it is, we just added the first and second graders to, to say, of course, all preschool, kindergarteners, first grade, and second grade students will be picked up and returned to the designated bus stop, blah, 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 and with an authorized person. If an authorized person is not present, the driver shall take the student back to his or her school, where parents will pick up the children. Bus drivers will return student to their schools if the person present is unfamiliar or unidentified. So I believe that that holds the parents definitely accountable. Because you should know where your kid's getting dropped off at, and if they're not, you know, that's that. We're protecting ourselves there. So that's our first reading. But, you know, like you guys...
So I picked up a child last spring. The bus driver didn't know me, the child did. I think maybe the bus driver didn't say anything because the child clearly knew me. But that's, you know, and as Ms. Lambert said, in practice, that policy is a lot trickier than it is on paper. And that's the thing we need to think about.
Well, especially around safety, you know? We want our kids to stay, to stay safe, especially the little ones. And sometimes, just because they know you doesn't mean they should be going with you either, you know?
That, that may be true, but I'm also thinking of how easy is it going to be? If the, if the bus driver is going through the Wyndhams where they're stopping in front of a house and dropping off two kids, it's fairly easy for the bus driver to say, is that the right person? Right?
Well, somebody's at the house.
But if the bus driver, if the bus driver is stopping at High Street and Valley and dropping off 30 kids, and they're going pell-mell off the bus, it's, it's not that easy for the bus driver to be sure that every kid is being met by an appropriate person. And you have this thing, well, maybe the, maybe the bus driver can hold back all the little kids.
Yes, exactly.
But the bus driver's got a schedule to keep.
They just want to drop off them.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's safety first. Safety first. So we're going to have to include that.
Except that the bus driver has to, you know, remember, you got, we're using the same buses to pick up and deliver elementary school and middle school and high school. And so as soon as a bus gets late, it cascades. And the next thing you know, children are late for school, are very late getting home. As a, as a practical matter, making this work is not going to be as, as easy as it is to pass policy.
We agree, it's not going to be as easy.
No, it's not going to be easy.
So what do you propose?
Well, first thing I propose is let's find out from parents what they think about this thing and what they, what they, what they would like us to do about it.
Okay, then.
Okay, we've already discussed that.
That's what I said we want to do, yeah.
So I think we should move on.
Okay. And you got the other one, the...
The other one, the student handbooks. Of course, you see the long addition there. Do you want me to read that? Or you guys, do you have it in front of you?
That's, that's basically just asking the superintendent to approve changes in the handbook, correct?
Yes.
No, it says that legal counsel will review all handbooks.
Not in, not in all cases, I don't think, does it?
On the policy, on the policy.
I'm going to go find this thing again. I read it, I read it twice, but...
It says edit, the administration still have, and that's crossed out, any handbook and any revisions reviewed by legal counsel under the supervision of the superintendent. Was there an impetus for this recently? Or it just seems like there are eight schools, if we have eight handbooks that all have to be reviewed by legal counsel, that's a lot of money, considering handbooks didn't come out at the high school till mid-October.
Well, wait a minute. It doesn't say that all the handbook revisions have to be reviewed by legal counsel, but it says if they are reviewed by legal counsel...
Any revisions, any revision.
Because any handbook and any revisions reviewed by legal counsel under the supervision of the superintendent. That is the entire handbook, and then any changes from year to year need to be reviewed by legal counsel.
That was not the intention. It was the revision, not any handbook. It was the revision.
It's just the verbiage is a little...
I'm reading it differently than you are.
Any handbook and any revisions is what it says, so.
And any revisions reviewed by legal counsel. There's no comma there.
Yeah, it was a typo. I think, I believe that's a typo that I overlooked.
Handbook and any revisions.
Because it's not supposed to, the edit is not supposed to be in there.
There's no, there's no comma there. It's any revisions reviewed by legal counsel.
I don't know.
Which is, wait a minute, which part?
Any handbook and any revision.
Because all it's supposed to say is the superintendent shall approve the publications of all handbooks, curriculum guides, manuals, pamphlets, and similar publications that deal with policies and procedures of the school system.
Period.
Period.
That edit shouldn't be there.
Yeah, I don't know. It's just a typo.
It's a whole, not quite sentence, but it's a whole not-sentence.
I know, I don't know.
Technically a sentence, but why are we...
What are we doing with that second part?
What are we doing with that second part?
Is that supposed to be there or not?
It's supposed to be there.
What's the intent?
Right. Why, why are we reviewing, why are we revising this now? Is there, is there some...
If the superintendent is going to review all of the handbook changes...
Because the administration, it was just the administration before.
Then it doesn't matter whether they were reviewed by attorneys or not.
Except that it not costs a lot for eight handbooks and revisions yearly.
No, 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 we don't want everything. But parts of hand, sometimes parts of handbook revisions will be reviewed by attorneys because they're, because they're subject to statute.
Right, that's not what that says.
I know. Well, let's make that go away.
That seems to be what is above in the original policy. So it might, I mean, it had, where it says, any district policies, state or state or federal law, maybe it's supposed to be added there, but it hasn't really been integrated.
See, we added the superintendent because it'd be, originally, it says the administration. And so we want, we added, I'm not sure why, but we added the superintendent.
The discussion was about the superintendent, not about that edit. So the question is, how did that edit get there?
No, not the edit, I don't know.
How did that get there?
Well, why would we, why would we break that up? Anyway, superintendent is the administration, that's...
Well, not necessarily.
No, it could be the building administration, as it has been. Was there an issue this year?
I mean, it falls under the superintendent anyway, so...
Dr. Garcia, was there an issue this year?
Well, there have been some issues in time, that something that, some thing that deal with policy, district policy, that goes out are not phrased appropriately. So in order to support the school and help them. And this is common. This is very common across school districts, that is superintendent. You know, I am not interested in the newsletter that they went home from.
No, we're talking about handbooks, not newsletters. But do you have time in your life to review these every single summer? Because the high school didn't get their handbook slash planner until mid-October. And they were told in September they weren't getting them this year, so...
Well, you know, if there's something that, I will definitely make some time for it because I don't know if I want to go through each page. But for example, when we have changes to policies that we have to put in a handbook, I will make sure that I do revise, I do review the handbook to make sure it's appropriate.
Can we get clarification for the next meeting then? And have a first reading at the next meeting? Is that possible?
Well, we can edit, we don't have to have another first reading. But we can, we can say, let's have a language that actually says what they want.
And a full sentence.
Yeah.
What, what are you talking about? The first one, the addition of the...
Well, the, I don't see why the second one is even necessary. It seems to me that's redundant.
The second one should not be there. So I will find out why it's even got in that piece of paper. I will take that.
If the superintendent is going to approve...
It was just an oversight. And we apologize. I, as the committee chair, apologize. And we will definitely...
Okay. So you can make that disappear.
We'll fix it because it shouldn't say any of that. It should just say, the superintendent...
Yeah.
Shall approve the publication of all handbook curriculum guides, the first part there.
No.
Is that covers it? That basically says the superintendent has to approve it.
So does ignore the edit.
Maybe that was just somebody's notes that got in there.
Yeah. It has to be somebody's note that got in there, Rick. That doesn't make any sense.
No, it's not supposed to be in there. Policies and procedures of the school system.
Do we really need to, to limit it?
No edit, just take the edit out. The whole sentence, the, the sentence.
I do, I do take Mrs. Lambert's point, though, is can you allow the superintendent to designate somebody to approve these things so that the superintendent doesn't have to personally undertake all these? So you can say the superintendent or the superintendent's designee.
Designee, yep. That'll work.
So she could assign a member of the central office staff, but it would be someone under her supervision rather than some vague administrative person that you don't know who it was.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll add, so it'll read...
What about the superintendent's office?
The superintendent or designee.
Or designee.
The superintendent's designee, so that the superintendent...
So what is, what, why are we having this? Do we have any problems, you know, with, we're having something specific that's been changed? What happened?
Well, the, the issue is making sure that the student handbooks don't turn out to be in conflict with statute somewhere.
Or our new, or changing policy over the previous year.
Or something that is in there that is not a district policy. So, we have found things in the handbook.
So, how, how would we get there? Who designed the handbook?
Well, because, the schools, the schools, so, we have found things in the handbook that has, that is not a district policy, we say, "Where did you get this from?" But it's designed by the school, and although we do not want to stop their creativity, we want the school to be creative and put things in there, we just need to have some type of ways of making sure that when, when they put a policy there, is the correct policy.
Yep.
Or at least if it's not, we know who to point the finger at.
Yeah, to me, I get, I get it, that's fine. I, I, I have the orange fish, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll add, or designee, the superintendent, or designee.
Yeah, so, so at least there's, well, no, it's a, it's an accountability issue, so.
You know, what, what is a pamphlet?
What?
Joseph Flyer, right?
Handbook, they're thick.
This is basically-
Nobody pamphlet, he said handbook and a pamphlet. Why, why?
Curriculum guides, manuals, pamphlets.
By having the, I mean, we're having some very specific-
Manus, pamphlets, and similar publications, it means similar, similar, because-
A pamphlet, but why, why is it pamphlet?
Well, maybe the preschool might only have a pamphlet, because they don't have a lot of policies.
My god, yeah, Dr. Garcia's gonna find that kinda free time.
You know, but-
That's why, that's why, that's, that's why I said, she gets the, she gets the designation.
But what usually happens is, you just give her the edits in red, and say, "These are the changes." It's not like she has to reread everything.
Yeah, that's true.
No.
It's just whatever, right.
Just the changes that were added.